In the last two years, we've done three events, five events actually. Three on the water and two at the Windermere. And invited the Camp Hope veterans to come in. They brought four in the first time. And then they said, I said, well, how do you like? And they said, Jim, you passed the test. So we'll do it again this year. So then last year, they brought in 35 veterans from Camp Hope. So it was a wonderful event. And so part of it is, is just talking about the event. So these veterans that are at Camp Hope from all of the United States. So one of the awards we give them is a paddle. So last year, we gave two paddles away. I think, who was there at the event we gave last time? So Lucy was there, I think. Sarah was there. Ashley was there. Several people were there. So we gave a couple paddles away to the guys that came the furthest away. One guy was from Seattle and one guy was from upstate New York. Which is the furthest from Texas? Upstate New York or Seattle? It is. Anyway, they both got paddles. So that's one of the, one of the cool things we gave them. So thank the city for that, that sponsorship and we're doing one again this year. And so the two we did, one started at the Hilton and then brought in a floating dock and that was successful. And then last year, we did a practice event at Lake Nassau and brought in a lot of the kids and had fun time. Kids got rubber duckies like this. We had awards and all that stuff. And then had a meal for them. And so we're doing one again this, this October 25th. And the object again is to have fun on the water. We don't know what it'll look like yet. Val Harbor has given us permission to use their marina. So we're just trying to figure out what we're going to do. Myself and David Blatt are putting this thing together. We have three years and so. But this is, this is, this is one of the potions we use. And then we help promote Nassau Bay, the home of the astronauts, moon trees, et cetera. And flyers like this. I think everybody's seen that, haven't they? You've seen all these? Okay. Anyway, so thank you all very much for that. We're looking forward to doing it again. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Anybody else? James? I'm not. You have three minutes, 12 seconds. Like to 20, so.
Okay, okay. So one of the things that we learned about, about paddling it was, we gave everybody a whistle. And then we paddled from the Hilton all the way to the Nassau Bay Marina. And I got the US Coast Guard with a patrol boat to show up, the Nassau Bay, of course, they helped us out on the water. The auxiliary, Coast Guard auxiliary, one of the inflatables from Nassau Bay and the sheriff's department. And the veterans just loved the fact that the patrol boat was out there with a machine gun. But they all got a whistle to try to do safety. And one of the things that was concerned us was seeing boats coming through them and getting around the boats, or around these, these human powered vessels. And that gets to be concerned, but we did it early enough, so we didn't have a problem. But we did have safety on the water. And one of the issues is we have blind bins in Nassau Bay. So sometimes people can't say he was coming around the corner. Therefore whistles and horns are important. Thank you.
Thank you. James? James Paul, the point lookout.
Good evening, everybody. I've come up here today to kind of present a restaurant concept that I want to bring to the neighborhood. This will be a full-service Tex-Mex restaurant rooted in quality, community. And I like the soundtrack, thank you for the theme music. That'll be rooted in community quality and local flavors. What that means to me is like, everything will be fresh. I want to use local vendors, some that are, that come to Irma's, you know, get them in, you know, and be able to take care of them. The design will be a blend of mid-century modern meets the vibrant soul of Mexico City. This will look elevated and refined, yet warm. So it'll feel like you're dining with family and being cozy. A key feature of the restaurant, I'll have 120-seat main dining room, a 50-seat private dining room with AV, TVs and things like that. So you can have presentations, family occasions, council hall meeting, you know, whatever you may feel like you need. The kitchen will be built for efficiency, won't sacrifice quality, but it will get food out very quickly. This will be good for the 19,000 employees that all are employed within our great city. Come in, grab a quick lunch, get right back to work. It'll be great for the extreme amount of tourists that we're going to see with the Wolf Lodge, Margaritaville and Nassau, Space Center Houston across the street. And as well as just being a place for families to eat and come in and get a good meal and be able to dine. The restaurant also feature a full-service bar program. Will focus on mezcal and tequila, but it'll also have familiar beers, wines and other spirits. Bring something new, but I like familiarity. So it's always good to have something we all know. The menu will feature all your Tex-Mex favorites, including sizzling, sizzling skillets with delicious fajitas. It's going to be more than just a restaurant. I want this to be a place that Nassau Bay is proud to, to have in its city. I want it to be a place where you can get good food, a great drink and enjoy the people of this great city. So that's my presentation. I look forward to working with the council and the mayor and the people of Nassau Bay. Thank you. Uh, to be determined. We're working on it. Maybe the Louvies, just for you, buddy.
He's in the, he's in the second pole position for Louvies and we're trying to think of something for you. But I think that'll be in the top. Thank you, James. Really appreciate it. Anybody else? Anybody else? Citizens comments? Point once? Point twice? Three times? Citizens here is closed. So with that, I also want to let the record reflect, please correct me if I'm wrong, but hate, counsel, but Haley, you were his counsel. Welcome, Haley.
Thank you, Paul. I apologize for all the issues, but thank you.
That's, takes priority, so I get it. Moving on to council member comments. Before, before we start, I want to make mention of a real class act. And it has to do with generally start with the council comment. No, sorry.
Our city manager, Paul Lopez, had made a decision that since we've, we're going to have her picture here and we're not going to nominate somebody to take her place, was that he was going to get fresh flowers every week. And if you ever come in here for the, for the eight weeks that I think she's, her seat's going to be vacant, it'll always be here, it'll always have her picture here. And I learned that he had been turning out and buying flowers just so that it's fresh and that her memory of us is still fresh. So I just say that's a real class act and I like to acknowledge that. Most people don't know that. And with that, I'll turn it to Lucy.
All right. First, I want to say thank you to the mayor, the city manager, the city staff and the city attorney because you guys are putting in so much hard work behind the scenes, making Nassau Bay a destination city. The, the things that you guys are doing and working on is just really impressive to see. So just a thank you to you guys, for real. And then also thank you to everyone who volunteered at Easter in the park. So I heard that was good. I got a couple of good pictures from the day. I was not able to attend, but I did get some nice pictures. And also thank you to the Garden Club for the amazing fashion show and event that they held. They also celebrated 60 years, which is pretty cool. My grandma used to live in Nassau Bay and she always had great things to say about her time with the Garden Club. So I loved hearing that it was 60 years. I tried to look around to see if there were any pictures of her, but I couldn't find any. And then finally, just for other council members, last month, we approved a code of conduct for committee members. And then with our packets, Maria sent us a draft policy for addressing conduct violations. And so I just want everyone to be sure to look at that and hopefully we can discuss that in the next coming months on what we want to do with just that process. So that's all I got.
That works.
I'll keep it very brief. I'm still working on the curbs. I finished here for it, except for Jim Soha's house. That's the one house I haven't done yet. But after that, San Sebastian is next. So I'm getting there eventually. So that's it.
Not much to say, just, well done, Paul. Oh, sorry, Haley. Go ahead, Wizard of Oz.
Can you turn that up more? Let me try. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, let me turn my video off, it might work better. Just want to echo what council member Summers said about the Garden Club Committee actually had a chance to be in that fashion show. It was a fun time, a great celebration, a lot of thought put behind that. So really enjoyable and 60 years, what a milestone. So happy to be a part of that. A special thanks to the Special Events Committee for Easter in the Park and all their efforts there. And I think that's it. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
I was just going to say, well done, Paul. I'm getting the fresh flowers. It's really a nice touch. And I'm very excited about this Tex-Mex concept. I kind of heard about it from your neighbor that lives behind you first. That's how Nassau Bay works, right? She, she kind of nudged me and said, I have a neighbor that's really interested in a restaurant. So when I saw you up there, I was like, oh, he really wants to do it if he's coming to a council meeting. So I'm very excited about this and I hope that we can support you in any way you need. Other than that, I heard the Garden Club show was a great success. I was teaching that day, so I couldn't be there, but I, I hear it was one of the best ever. And Ashley Klug wants it to happen every year.
Okay, as I echo, as usual, everyone's comments, those flowers that Paul got are actually from the Garden Club Fashion Show. They were a centerpiece. So Paul, I think, purchased those personally. I think it's just a class act. So kudos there. Yes, the Garden Club Fashion Show, I think, was one of the best yet. Had a really good time. And like I said, a big shout out to Rhonda Davis, Julie Russell, Royce Walker and everyone who was involved, as well as the Clothes Horse in Lake City. And then the unique boutique by Jeanette, I believe it was, was the other apparel that donated their time. Easter egg hunt in the park was a huge success, thanks to all of everyone involved. Believe it or not, we had the community garage sale last year for the first time and I didn't think it was really going to take, but we've had a lot of people write in and say, hey, can we do that again? So a new volunteer in the neighborhood who's actually on the Nassau Bay App Committee, Christina Augustine, is going to be spearheading that. And I think she's already put out some stuff. So be prepared to see some marketing on that front. It's going to take place on May 17th, between 8:00 and 2:00 is what I've heard. So if you want to sign up, you can reach out to her. On the Nassau Bay App front, we had our first meeting last Wednesday. I think it was a great success. Thanks to Spencer, Christina and Chris Longmore for attending. We have our next meeting this Wednesday, hopefully to button things up before we can launch it out to the community. So thank you, everyone, on that. And then I was just going to say, I haven't been down to the parks in a while, but I saw the playground down at David Baum Park and there were just kids everywhere. It looks really, really great. And then also, it just occurred to me that hurricane season is upon us, so I'm hoping that we're going to be able to get a hurricane prep meeting scheduled sooner rather than later this year. That's all I had. Thanks.
Let me, I want to mention two things that's been mentioned here already, which is the fashion show with the Garden Club. I've had a little bit of inside information from the treasurer. Apparently attendance was up over 25%. I think it's the record attendance. And they will more than double their proceeds that they, they had from it. And I mean clearance, this is the actual profit from it, not just the revenue. So I think it was a, a great event and for everybody who contributed, that, that was great. And Easter in the park, nobody's mentioned anything about the Peter Rabbit, the Easter Bunny. He showed up and actually made it through what I think was easily over 300, 400 kids that were, that were out there. So hats off to everybody who's been involved with the Easter in the park and it was great. Already mentioned about Paula, I also want to say, I give great kudos to this council. We, we successfully, I think, put to bed treating Tracy Sullivan properly. If you remember, Tracy Sullivan is the wife of Kayla Sullivan. And we have taken on the responsibility and finished and we signed an agreement with her that, that I want visibility here, which means we're going to be paying her back 20, about $20,000 of expenses that she had to pay that were really the city's responsibility. So Jaime is, you know, has, you know, we're going to have to probably do a budget change for that. But it also means that we are now responsible for her medical insurance, which is what is guaranteed under the, the Texas law for spouses of fallen officers. So we are now, I believe, whole with Tracy. Very appreciative and I'm very pleased that this council supported our people in blue and that's an important one. The last thing I'll mention, because some of the other things are on the agenda, an update on Margaritaville. We are, we have already established the corporation. It's called Ayrshire Nassau Bay LLC. Ayrshire Nassau Bay LLC now holds the sale agreement with the Hilton for the purchase. There is a purchase and sale agreement in place with the first tranche of money that was approved by this city council has been put up as the earnest money, so it is under contract. So that, that part's done. In addition, the updating and the assignment of the franchise, we are now officially the franchisee, that corporation. So we've got both the franchise agreement as well as the purchase agreement and we're gearing for a close April 25th. I don't, there'll be, there'll be more in, in executive session, but I, I don't know if we'll make the 25th. We have the ability to open up some options that will allow us to, to delay till, till the latest June, June 9th. But I'm geared, I'm still not giving up that we're going to have it bought and owned by Ayrshire Nassau Bay by April 25th. And in the agreement, there's two words that have to be on the name of the hotel, Margaritaville and Nassau Bay. So I guess it's three words with two concepts. So all's, all's going well there. And I'll, I'll just make, don't forget Keels and Wheels is coming up too, folks. That's a great event. Have, have fun. And I guess it's May 3rd and 4th, if my memory serves me correctly. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul for the city manager's report.
Thank you. The Nassau One Waterline Project is going really well. About 1,800 feet has been installed. The $2 million water project, we're going to open up bids on May 15th and then we will award a contractor, the contract to a contractor in the June meeting. We confirmed the water tower painting project bid. We're going to open those up in June and then award it at the July council meeting. The CenterPoint, I've been working with CenterPoint, so all, almost all the lights on Nassau One have been transitioned to the white LED and way ahead of schedule on that. That was supposed to be done in December. And city attorney Dick Gregg's been working with the HOA lawyers on the finger pier so we can get those taken over. And then we're confirming street sweeping, May 3rd and May 10th. And so I want to give up.
Those dates again?
May 3rd and May 10th.
May 3rd and May 10th.
And then the last, the, the city is looking really, really well. So I want to thank staff for that and it's, it's looking really, really good. And last, tomorrow is council member Horton's birthday, so I'd like to wish her a happy birthday.
Tax Day. I didn't marry an accountant luckily, so.
Did I hear Haley? Did you make a comment?
Yeah, I have a question. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Paul, going into the summer months and knowing we're going, the mosquito spring will begin and how often that will happen?
I need to confirm, but I think around June and then we will start, it'll be on Tuesdays and Thursdays every week, depending on the mosquito count.
Okay, thank you.
And one thing I'll, I'll mention is, people have commented to me that since we're going to be painting the water tower, both inside and out, and we should, there's going to be discussions around the logo that should be there. And I've heard people saying we should have just a straight blue tower. I've heard people say we should have Nassau Bay. I've heard people say we should have the city of Nassau Bay. And I've heard people say we should have a city of Nassau Bay that says 5 o'clock somewhere forever in Nassau. All of you, right? Get your, get your food back in as to what you want up on the, up on the water, because he's going to start painting very shortly.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor and council and citizens. Our numbers for March of 2025, for the police department, 258 calls for service, 35 reports were taken, 93 traffic stops, 50 citations, 55 warnings, nine arrests, eight of those were misdemeanors, one was a felony, 4,290 patrol miles. And because of our new system, the average response time is unavailable. We can't pull that right now. So I'll have that for you hopefully next month. Just two real quick announcements. This week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So our dispatchers who are over at Webster, this is, this is a week that we honor all the dispatchers, people we call behind the, behind the headsets. They're working 24 hours. When, when you call 911 or you call the non-emergency number, the first person you talk to is one of those telecommunications or those dispatchers. They're our lifeline, law enforcement when we're on the streets. They're on the other end of the radios for us. So we just want to recognize all those people who, they're, they're working in a room in the police department, in the police station. Nobody ever gets to see them, but they're just as vital as the officers that you see on the street. So this is a week that we recognize them. Coming Saturday, April 26th, is drug takeback for prescription medications. So if you, if you don't want to bring them up here to the drop-off that's here during the week, on April 26th, will be out in front of city hall from 10:00 to 2:00 a.m. You can bring any of your unused prescription medications and we will pick those up for you. You don't have to get out of the car, no questions asked. And then we'll take those and get them disposed with DEA. Just be aware that we cannot accept any liquids, we can't accept any sharps. So just pills and capsules and patches and things like that. Saturday, April the 26th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. here in the drive-through, in the drive at the front of the city hall. So thank you.
Hey, Mayor, that's for expired medications?
I don't believe that's necessary. I believe it's for any, including expired.
Yeah. Any medication that somebody's wanting to get rid of, if it's, you have someone, loved one who doesn't need the medication anymore, or it's expired, just so it doesn't go down, doesn't go down the drain, doesn't go into our, our ecosystem and things like that. Any, any medication, except for we cannot accept liquids and we cannot accept sharps, needles and things like that. So.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Matt?
All right. Now I've got a very brief report for you. So our membership's holding strong at 40 members. And then you've heard, most of you guys have heard about the new system. It's, we're in this phase of, I'm not calling it upgrade, I'm calling it a new system. And we have to do manual input. And so we don't have our response total calls for last month or the hours yet, but we'll get those to you and we can update them at the next roll through.
We're here for my team, we're here to help.
That's right. Now, there's, there's been a lot of work between PD and the fire chief, Tom, and the fire department of trying to get this system up and running. It was one of those things where, you know, they've been planning to do it, they've been planning to do it and their words were, let's rip the band-aid off. And they did, how many agencies? Like 40? Pretty much the whole area. And they, it's been one of those IT upgrade struggles. So we're, we're making our way through it, but a lot of work to do that.
52 total.
52 total agencies. Yeah. Yeah. So we'll get there.
All right. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
EMS?
Mayor, there's no report for the month. They're having the same software issue that PD and fire happened. So no report this month.
Code enforcement, Tony?
For the past month or so, we've done 12 open cases on code enforcement. Fire marshal wise, we've done 18 fire inspections. The code enforcement ranges anywhere from the high grass, dilapidated fences, exterior paint, trash and dumpster issues and so forth. We've sent out approximately eight certified letters. We issued three warning notices and no citations this month, so.
Anything you can say about the Bay House?
Haley can't hear me. Oh, sorry. Sorry.
The Bay House.
I can, I can hear. Okay.
Okay. I know, I stopped by the Bay House and also met with Paul out there at the Bay House and Paul is kind of spearheading that and trying to get it cleaned up.
Do you want to add something, Paul?
Yes, so I've had some complaints from some residents. And so I personally tried to reach out and I went by the Bay House and they weren't there. So through the management system, through management company, they're no longer representing the owner. And so I reached out to the owner and so we're having those discussions. But Tony is actively, I told the owner, we will be giving them citations. So we're staying on it. They have a, you know, green pool and.
I'll, I'll add a little footnote to the business. The reason why the company's not doing it is because the owner is not getting paid for any interest. So they're not getting paid. And they made notice of that and we're watching it very carefully. We're very concerned and we're upping the oversight because, you know, there's still the burnt out areas, there's still the things that is on that property. Hoping to prevent, present an opportunity for us and some big plans, but at the same time, I keep me aware that there's very little management oversight happening in the property now. And I want people to know that and be careful.
That's all.
Public Works?
Yes, Elias is out sick. I'll take that over. The Stormwater Project on Davon is completed. We've, we've signed the invoice. TexDOT is repairing and repainting the curbs on Nassau One. They look really, really good. It's a big improvement. Crews are locating existing water valves and going through a water valve exercising program currently. It looks like they jetted 150 feet of sanitary sewer line on San Sebastian. They've assisted with Easter in the park. Spring repairs continue with the city. And also tree trimming around the city continues. And they've done mulch rings on Nassau One, I believe, last week. And now we're preparing for mulch rings along Upper Bay, along all the trees on Upper Bay. So they look really good. And then curb painting continues and has the fountains at Lake Nassau were pulled for maintenance. So we're getting ready for the summer months.
Can I ask a little bit of attention to the flower pots that are both for Kayla Sullivan as well as past city manager, Chris Reed?
Yes, sir.
They look like they could use some.
Okay.
Special Events Committee?
Great event, nothing else to report right now.
Other than they, they told me, thank you to the Public Works folks. They really, they really came out for them and there was quite a number of volunteers. That was great.
Good. They told me nothing, so thank you.
Parks and Recreation?
So I did a little PowerPoint to show some of the stuff that we've been working on. And before we get started, I can just say that, again, Elias is not here, but he never, he never gives credit to all the things that he actually does, because there's a lot of other things that he does for us. So Elias, he's always doing so much extra. And Jose, he's always humble about what he does. So if you can click on the second slide, we'll start with that. We had the dedication of the little library in Swan Lagoon for the Tomasi family. That turned out, as you can see, oh, that turned out really well. There was a, a big crowd there. That was, I think a lot of them were there to make their condolences about Paula. But we also dedicated that library. There's, it's stuffed full of books, so I think that's a great addition to the library. And thanks to Nancy Lynn and Kim and Laura for helping out with that and the mayor too. Thank you. So the next slide. So we had a beautification day. You probably saw that a lot of flowers went in, but we're short of it because they're those little pinwheel flowers. So there's some more coming. We had some more flowers come in this weekend. We were a little early this year, so we're waiting for some more flowers to come in. So you'll see some more that will go up around the city. And then the median flowers on Nassau Bay Drive, End Point Lookout Drive and Upper Bay, those are going to be coming in as soon as we get the vinca's as well. The city, Public Works is also going to be doing that. And part of that, at the same time, we're going to finally get some more flowers on the end caps of the San Sebastian medians. It'll, you know, look similar to the rest of the flowers that you see on the end caps around the city. So the next. So the Apollo Dog Park sign finally got installed. And Elias, again, he and his crew, Jose, they put up that American flag to go with they put up that American flag to go with it, which matches the sign, so it looks really cool, really, really nice. And I think we're going to paint the base white, so they're going to get that done, and you can see the little QR code down at the bottom, so that actually now just goes to kind of a dead link on the city webpage, but eventually you'll have a webpage there that will talk about all the astronauts. We've been getting the other data and photographs, some photographs of actually those astronauts that are listed there on that sign with them with their dogs, so we have a lot of that, and we'll tell stories about that and, you know, where they lived and things like that. So that got done this past weekend, and then the next one, the next slide, sorry. So the next slide. Can you get it?
Yeah.
Okay, so the moon tree plaques got replaced, you noticed the old ones were plastic and they were kind of melting, so we got the metal ones that should have a life of 50 years or more, and also you can see the little QR code, somebody put some little silk flowers out there, it's kind of cute, and you can see that one of the moon trees is already getting the leaves back again already, so that looks really nice, those turned out real nice too, I think.
Just so everyone's aware, the sick moors, they're saying they're going to be probably over sixty.
Wow, so that'd be cool.
Those are going to be massive.
Yeah, so it'll be really nice, and eventually, right there, that's the one on the left, is the one in front of City Hall, we want to have a path that leads to the statues, the astronauts, which I, I'll talk about that in a minute. Okay, so the next slide. So the big project that we did, I want to thank Jacob Ford, he was the subcommittee chair on that, but he's not here right now, and Laura Ford. So this was on the budget this year, it's a couple pieces that we're adding to the dog park. The one on the left is a little bone that the dogs can jump over going in the big dog park, and it already has like a little tunnel there, so we put two pieces on the little dog side, one called Walk the Plank and the other one Limbone, so the next page, I believe, is the, the next slide is the map of where it's going to go. So Jacob Ford took very careful details in measuring this out, and he drew this diagram right here, and it shows the location of where the Walk the Plank goes, on the right-hand side is a small dog park, and the over and under is that little thing that is adjustable, and then the Limbone, the dog bone, is going to go on the big dog park side, you can see kind of on the left. So the PO went in for that, and that's going to be installed probably in the next month or two, and we're going to use neutral colors and some Nassau Bay blue accents to kind of match everything that's out there in the park. Okay, so the next slide. So we had, Kim Clark, thank you for leading the way on this, she had a member of the Garden Club who also, Janine White, did I say that right? Yeah. She owns a little business here in Nassau Bay, she's also on the Garden Club, and she, we were saying with this nice platform out there in Founder's, we could do yoga in the park or meditation in the park.
She's right here.
Oh, is she there? Oh, Janine, thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see, I'm partially blind, so I'm sorry. So anyway, she did a great presentation for us on the Parks Committee, and we said, "Okay, we're going to do this as an activity for the community." It was open to everyone, and you can see they had a really good showing despite the fact that there was a lot going on that day. It was a beautiful day, and as you can see in the upper right-hand side, the ducks got into it as well. It just looks beautiful out there. Unfortunately, I've got some, I've got a surgery on Wednesday, so I'm trying to get ready for that, and I couldn't make it to that, but I hope we can have another one. I think everybody really enjoyed it, I got a lot of compliments on that, so that was this past weekend. So, the next slide. So the next thing is the art box wraps, which are going to be up on the Nassau Road One by the Nassau Bay Drive, Point Lookout and Upper Bay, and we finally got a quote from this company, it says that it would be $12,000 total for them to do all those art boxes, and if you want to know their work, they do the ones in League City. So if you've driven by League City and you've seen the flowers and things like that, they actually paint on the surface and they have artists. And the committee came up with having space themed, and the first one was going to be the Apollo era, so it has like the 1960s vibe, and then the next one would be the Space Shuttle era, so the 80s and the Space Shuttle vibe, and then the last one would be Artemis or the, you know, one right now with the SpaceX vibe and the kind of upgraded futuristic-looking spacesuits.
Not the ones...
What's that? No, not these, this is just a sample they sent me of their work. I think the best one is probably the Martin Luther King one, because you can see how good the details on the face are, right? So we want to do something like that. So what they will do next is, we're working with Tech Dot to get all the finalized details on that, then they'll bring us two options of artwork that we could decide which one we want to do. You know, they'll have two options for each metal box, so that way people, we can make a decision. They'll probably, you know, talk to us a little bit more, we talked a little bit about what, you know, people have sent in kind of design ideas, but they'll come up with that next, and then we'll make the final decision on what we want to do. We want to do something really classy, more like the Martin Luther King one where you can see how beautiful the details are, and you've seen the beautiful ones, I think, in League City, has everybody seen those, that when you go by, they do really good work? And they do the proper, League City told me that these people do the really proper work on the paint, so it doesn't peel off or anything like that, and it's quite an ordeal to do it properly, and then they also have worked with Tech Dot, so they know what to do to make it safe. So that's coming along. So the next one, this is just a list of everything that's up next, we're going to do the trashcan replacement, we have picnic tables that need to be replaced that are rusted out, we have the bench swings that are coming that we've talked about, these are all in the budget, the renovation of Saturn Lane artwork, thank you, Kim, for coming out with me, that was her idea, actually, I thought it was a great idea, but it's very chipped out there, and we got, we finally got ahold of the artist, we met him out there, we walked through everything, he was supposed to give me a quote today, but he didn't get it done, so he said it's coming imminently, so we should be able to have a quote of what that would cost to renovate those, and he was going to give us two options, so if one was too expensive, we could work with the other one, but I believe that comes out of the hot sun, so that should be, hopefully, okay. The pickleball courts, I believe we're waiting for the final drawings from them, Mayor?
We've got two options, John, one is per...
Okay, so that's, so a lot of people have asked about that, we haven't forgotten about it, we're working with the city staff to try to get that, you know, put in, so that way we can have something by the summer.
Just so everyone knows, and Paul knows this, is that we're very much wanting to put in the 10 or 12-foot fencing, so that there is the windbreak for the pickleball court.
Okay. So do you have any idea of the date on that, because a lot of people ask us about that all the time?
We're thinking of starting before you get there.
Oh, that's great, okay, thank you so much, a lot of people will be happy to hear that. Yeah. And then the Howard Ward Park sign and the Swan Lagoon signs, those wooden signs were done by Scott Klein, and he did agree that he would do us matching signs for David Prawn and Founder's Park, he's waiting on getting the wood, and then we're going to start getting those made, and the white lamps in the, in paint were painted in Swan Lagoon, another thing that the staff, that Elias and his staff and Jose do, but nobody, they don't take credit for all this. And then next is going to be the white lamps painted in Howard Ward Park, he's got that on the schedule. Chase, gave you an update about the street numbering. The art feature with water, we're still working on, we had one rendering, but it didn't look like artwork really, so we're having them to go back to the board, and it's quite complicated to get them to do exactly what we want for free. They said they would do a rendering for us, but for $5,000, so we don't want to do that just yet, unless you guys want to do that, but we can talk about that at the next budget meeting if we can't succeed. The other thing is that Councilwoman Klug brought this up, she wanted to do the little mini astronauts, like they have the Pelicans in Kima and have little mini astronauts, so the committee liked that a lot, and we're starting to reach out to the vendors and try to see if we can get them to come in and tell us what that would take to do that. We're still doing the first responders guard, and that's, somebody's donating that, it's just going to be plants, basically. I met with some people over there that live in that area, and they gave me some ideas about what they'd like to do there, so we're going to get some consensus from the neighbors and then get a design out. The Buzz Aldrin statue, I think the mayor may have more information about that.
There's a question, which is the Ayrshire...
Ayrshire, which is the developer that we partnered with, and I should have said this before, they've been here as long as they helped build the, or they did build the Astrodome, they built NRG, they built the Toyota Center, they actually built the South Shore Harbor Resort area, and they have been here throughout the space race, and...
A lot of the development in San Antonio.
And that's correct, and the point of my story is, is that they've been very much supportive of doing mural artwork and statues in recognition of the space program, and they have a statue that they're getting ready, that they want to place, and because we're working together, they're wanting to put that here in Nassau Bay, and that was already paid for, it's actually done, and it's by the same artist that you guys were looking at.
Who's, what is it?
I have to, I mean, I just remember they said it.
Okay. So, yeah, so anyway, that's still in the works, and then we're still talking about doing an art mural in the Marina, but also some people mentioned that they wanted to have the volleyball nets on both volleyball poles out there, so we are getting that done, and Elias was going to look into putting a sand pit where the volleyball nets are, because this was some request from the neighborhood, which is, I don't think that's expensive or anything like that. So the last thing I wanted to mention is that I know you guys have a nomination up for another Parks person to take the place of Josh Wenke, unfortunately, who could not continue because of his personal commitments, and I wanted to recommend Kim Clark, she wasn't in the packet that I saw, she's actually on the Keep Nassau Bay Beautiful Committee, and she, her application was, but her name was not listed as one of the people on the Keep Nassau Bay Beautiful Committee, and she's done a lot for, in the last couple of years, she's been to pretty much every single event, she was part of the Garden Club, she was part of doing that event that you guys all talked about, she helped run that and put that together, and she's coordinated a lot with the flower events that we've had for the fall sweep, and as you can see, I've talked about her so many times, she helped with the moon tree with the wreaths, picking that stuff out, and she's been a valuable asset to the committee, and I would just hope that you would strongly consider her for that position.
Anything else?
Nope, if you have any questions.
Has anybody been talking about having covering in the dog park?
Oh, yes, somebody did bring that up, they had the covering over the baseball...
The dog park.
Oh, the dog park, no, no, no covering of the dog park, the baseball field.
Somebody's trying to get a tree break in.
We were going to put another tree in, actually, so a tree's going in, actually, as we speak, but not a covering, but there was a cut, somebody talked about having a covering on the bleachers for the baseball park, which we're going to look at in the next, in the next meeting, but no covering at the dog park, no. Anything else?
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Maritime Committee?
Good evening, I'm Audrey Harvey, come on up here.
I'm going to give you one of those tabs.
Okay, so we haven't had a meeting since the last council meeting, but our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 22nd at 4:00 p.m. The Maritime Safety Committee's last report detailed a review of the current condition of signs with recommendations for new signage. Since then, the committee, our committee member, Jason Small, has been working directly with Paul Lopez to finalize sign verbiage to include the Cove entrance sign.
What time?
The what? Entrance, Cove.
Oh, Cove, okay.
During our upcoming meeting, we will discuss a strategy for information distribution, creating content for the city's website boating page with hopes to make it a one-stop-shop for boating information, and collaborate with the Community Engagement Committee to provide maritime safety content for their app. This concludes my report.
Well, I'd like to maybe give you a little bit more kudos than you're saying, because I've met with the city manager, and I believe there is an active purchase, and they were or have purchased, how many?
21 signs we have, 21 signs and seven buoys.
So the amount of work that Jason Small and this committee did, and I mentioned Jason because he did a lot of the heavy lifting, is identified each and every aid or sign or restriction and captured it and actually presented the pictures of it in a catalog. So the amount of work that was done was, I'm very impressed, and you're going to see probably in the next three weeks, I won't...
I confirm the dates of...
Yeah, so very shortly, and you know, boating season is upon us, you're going to see, like, and this is something we've tried to structure, is a light switch where we're going to put all those up at once, we think we can do it in a two-day period, so you'll see all new fresh signage and fresh buoys all in, all in a very short period of time across the board, so I thank you guys for what you're doing.
Okay. Thank you for adding that.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to the agenda, the consent agenda, this is only really one, which is consideration and possible action to approve the minutes, pages 15 to 25 as well, I guess that's the March 24th, 2025 City Council regular meeting minutes, so there's two, two minutes in that area. Any concern with this on the consent agenda?
The only thing that I noticed was under number four, further citizens' comments, misspelled Omar Abbotteen's last name, it's A-B-O-T-T-E-E-N.
Can you say that again?
A-B-O-T-T-E-E-N, just that one correction that I saw.
Which, we don't need to pull these out, I'm hoping. Then I need a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as is, with that one amendment.
One correction, any other comments? I'm going to call for the vote, all those in favor?
I'll second that before we vote.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to push it, guys, I'm trying to push it. This is seconded by Lucy, all those in favor?
Haley, yep, I see you.
So, six, nothing. The old business, and I want to mention, these are updates, these are discussion only, so there's not going to be any action. The first one is the council discussion regarding the agreement between the City of Nassau Bay and the owner, Dr. Mae Jamison, regarding the property located at 18410 Kingsdown Court in Nassau Bay, Texas, 77058. Counselor?
Want me to do it?
Yes.
The Texas Rules of Procedure allow a vehicle called a Rule 11 agreement, which is a purgatory level before final judgment, and that's because we haven't reached the date that she's supposed to be completed by, which is May the 12th. But what we have an agreement from her in writing is that she agrees that we have a valid breach of contract claim, she agrees she's in breach of that agreement, that she failed to complete the work items that were designated in that contract, and this judgment actually specifies what those are and gives her until July the 12th to complete them. It also gives us $10,000 attorney's fees if she doesn't complete it, and she agrees that that's a reasonable sum, and she's not going to contest it. Now, whenever you're dealing with Ms. Jamison, there's usually a loose thread in the hem of the garment, and like it is in the Bible, and so, so she signed it, but she signed it electronically and didn't do the notarization, so rather than leave that alone, we went back, we have the written agreement of the lawyer, that that's her signature, we have the written agreement of the lawyer, that he agrees on her behalf, and that's specified and allowed under, under the Texas Rules of Procedure as an unsworn declaration, so it's just, it'd be just as good as she signed it, but she should have signed it and left it, left that hanging. She's actually signed, but she didn't have it notarized, and it should have been notarized, this takes the place of that. We have a final judgment, and it's enforceable, if there are any problem with it, these are all the elements we'd need for a motion for summary judgment, so I think we got it wrapped up as well as we can wrap it.
At least at this stage.
At this stage.
You give a very eloquent one, I call it leopards don't change their spots.
Leopards don't change their spots.
But in any event, I know here if there's any questions, I think we're coming to quickly the end game, at least at this stage, and I'm hoping it's going to be the permanent one. The pictures, and we had an inspection, Paul?
Yes, sir, there was an inspection done April the 8th, and looking at the checkoff list, it looks like there are 16 uncompleted items of 45, along with...
So they completed a lot.
Yes, they have done a lot, but they're not through.
I was, I was going to say, and I mentioned this at the coffee, for those there, is she's actively doing a lot of work. I still, pardon me?
No, it's me.
Yeah, so I mean, and I'm going to stand by what I said before, which is, you know, I think it's going to be very difficult for her to complete everything, and it's going to come to where she's going to be charged with $10,000, and what I've asked of counsel, with counselor, which is why I was there, and it's going to be a discussion in executive session, I anticipate some, you know, action that she's going to try to get out of it, and I want to make sure we fully discuss all options that we have, because I think, like we said, enough is enough, and, but we're, I think it's June 9th, which is the, which is the, is it May, excuse me?
May 12th.
May 12th, May 12th is the deadline for that legal action.
Can you, I'm sorry, Mr. Greg, can you explain July, distinguish the dates of May 12th and July 12th for me? What's due May 12th and what's due July?
July 12, 2024 was when she breached it before.
Okay, okay.
May 12 of 2025 is when she has to do it this time.
That's our, that's our drop-dead date.
That's our drop-dead date, and that's the date we can act upon.
Okay.
And if she doesn't act completely by that date, then we file the judgment for the $10,000.
Okay.
And we're not through, because if she's not through, we're not through.
The, just the, for here...
So the drop-dead date...
Oh, I'm sorry, Haley, I didn't hear you talk, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Greg, can you clarify the drop-dead date, meaning we either extend or keep going or find her, but when, when would it actually end? I mean, I think a lot of us agree, like the exterior of that home that she hasn't completely done, and there's still a lot of outstanding...
Well, they're all specified in the agreement, in the judgment, it's itemized as to the things that'll be done, and they're all things we want. If she doesn't do that, we can file again, and we'll have, we have a lay-down summary judgment, because she's clearly admitting that she's in breach of all these things. It'd be a foolish thing to do to go beyond that, but if she does, we've got things we can do about it.
And just to clarify, this wouldn't be that we would then find her, she's actually agreed that if she doesn't do this, the judgment will be, so it's...
That's exactly right, but that doesn't limit us... That's exactly right, but that doesn't limit us if she hasn't finished, we'd be entitled to that, plus we can go ahead and file a new suit if we needed to, with all the facts proven, because we got her admission as to what those things are, so I think it's as good as we can get. I like it.
And I agree with you, Haley, I don't know why she is choosing to do the exterior things last.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Because that's probably the biggest thorn in the neighbors, is the condition that they have to see of the exterior. If, I would, I would bet there would not be nearly the amount of anger if she had prioritized differently, but that's not the case, so.
Sure, and I think, I think there's complaints of, like, rodents and snakes, and there are different things that might or might not be present regardless of that house, but, you know, I think the exterior, like, shouldn't be put off, and we've got to come to a closing point, I mean, she's well past these due dates.
My rudder, and what I think this council did last time, was gave consensus that the fine would be upped, you know, to like, the area of, or the judgment would be thirty thousand, but not, not to exclude all legal fees, so it would be two parts, not just one part.
Subject to court, that would all be subject to court approval, of course, but right now we have her agreement on the $10,000.
Okay.
So, she came back out of that.
Any more, any more questions, any more comments? Moving on to the next council discussion regarding the sixty-five North Group assessment of the building and the police department. I put that one on there, and I just, I just want to mention some, because there's a lot of misinformation going on, and it even, even came up at the, at the coffee. The sixty-five North Group was, is doing the assessment of the two departments, and we're having these assessments because the Charter Review Committee of, I guess it was Gary Mossman, John Haugen, Rauf Farid, Gail Nelson, and, yeah, yeah, Charlie, yeah, Charlie Baumann, and they made recommendations for the charter review, and this is one of them, which was every, every year we'd take two, basically two departments, and we would review for best practices, and that means, you know, the two we chose was the building department, because I think anybody who's been associated with the building department knows we've had a lot of difficulties there, and we wanted the things, and then the police department, because it's almost 30% of our budget. What the confusion is, is there was a survey, there's a citizen survey that's coming out, that's not, that's not the work that they're really doing. They've been here since November, December, you know, working with the staff, going over to do benchmarking, things along that line, and as a complete package, they're doing citizen input in addition to that, that, that survey. The whole intention of this is to give what they say, benchmarks and best practices, to the chief. This is meant to be for the department heads to look at what other people are doing, what the things are to be continuous improvement, in order to look at what we're doing and get the help, where it's in recognition, we're a 5,000-person city, we don't have the resources of a million-person city, and this is to be able to look at that and benchmark in a constructive way. So, I would highly recommend, you know, from the texts and the emails, not to do this as a polarization, this is not something here to be able to either say, get really, really high kudos or really, really low, this is meant to be able to give a document through a good group to the chief, so he can see and be able to look at different avenues for what, what we can do as a, as a police department, and specifically the building department. Next year is probably going to be public works and HR, so this is not just one effort, this is from the Charter Review Committee that we're putting forward as requirements for us as a total organization, and I want, I want that to be out there, because there's a, there's a lot of people talking smack all the way around about what's going on, and I just think it, it does a disservice to everybody, and I don't, I'm sure people have seen them, and, but that's, I wanted, I wanted that to be on the record.
And then, I think, I want, I talked to Paul a little bit about this, because I had people concerned about how this survey works, and Paul assured me that people can only vote once, that somehow that they have a way to show that it's, it's gone to one person's device, so no, there will be no repeat voting, you know, and I think it's going out in two water bill cycles, is that correct?
It is, yes.
Yeah, so, so, there's lots of opportunity to, you know, for everybody to voice their input, and yeah, just be honest, that's all we're asking for.
Because, I mean, I'm going to reiterate, this is going to be given to the chief, this is going to be done as a way to facilitate just what a expert in the area and how they do benchmarking, as well as a citizen input, for kudos or constructive improvement, so, anyways, I'll leave it there unless there's other questions.
Mayor, I have some updated quick numbers.
Yeah, sure.
Real quick, for the building department, we've sent, sixty-five North sent out six hundred and thirteen emails to the contractors to get their input, and 21% responded, and then it went out into April, and it's, it went out in April, water bill, it's going out in the May water bill, we passed out 200 flyers over nine apartment complexes, so we're really trying to work, to make sure everybody, you know, is able to respond, and then on the police so far, it's 110 responses, not even 9% of those are residents, and the responses are very, very positive. So, we'll have some really updated numbers, but so far, it's going really good, we've had some positive feedback on it, but so far, everything is going well.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Any other, any other questions, any other comments? Then I'm going to move on. Council update, status report on the finger piers, these are right there, the ones that are currently thought to have been owned by the Homeowners Association, that we are actively looking at acquiring from the Homeowners Association, and I'll leave it to councilor to kind of give an update.
Well, when it came on my plate, we had no record here at the city of any ownership or management of the finger piers by the city. Home Association had no record in their files of anything, other than the fact that they had insured it before. I knew that, because it's in the navigable waterway, that you have to get any kind of pier recognized and leased from the state of Texas, so I called the GLO, and lo and behold, back, a while back, when Jason Reynolds was city manager, he got a, he got a pier permit for those finger piers, for the city, and so, it's, it's current, it's not going to expire until next year, and rather than just leave it at that, we have an understanding with the, I've talked with the lawyer for the association, and I've written a memorandum of understanding and a bill of sale, we'll pay them $10, and we'll take the responsibility, and they won't have any further responsibility, so it puts a bow on it, and we'll be done. That's where we are.
So, more than likely, before next council meeting, we will own those things definitively, without challenge.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have the actual document on the next meeting, I talked to the lawyer for the association, and she had no problem with what I put together, so I think she'll present it to the HOA, and we'll, we'll have this on our next agenda.
Okay. Any other questions? Chief, status report on security camera installation at city parks?
So, we're still working, trying to work with several companies to get some, some proposals and some ideas on, on basic costs. Council, you should have a sheet I left on your, I didn't have it in time for Maria to get in your, in your packets, this is kind of a snapshot of the availabilities, we're talking with Flock about live cameras, not the LPR cameras, the LPR cameras that we have now are just snapshots, the live cameras would be video, so you have, we have two options or basic options, these are not the complete options, but one's a fixed video camera, which is just, and you kind of have a picture there, that's just a standard camera, it'll take live pictures, you can see that's $3,000 a camera per year, it's $150 install fee if we use any of our existing infrastructure poles and stuff, if Flock has to install their own poles, that's a $650 install, that's solar powered, you can see some of the highlights there. On the back, you have the option of a PT Zoo, which is a pan tilt and zoom camera, those are also 300, he's got $3,000 camera here, one of these cameras, he had told me verbally that was 4,500, but, or 5,000, but anyhow, these cameras, the 3,000 includes what we have already now, the cellular cameras, they work off of a cell service, so that's part of the yearly maintenance fee, along with the maintenance of the cameras and things like that, that's why there's $3,000. So, those are just some options, we're still working with them, they don't have a deployment schedule, because we were looking, they're working with us virtually and looking at Google Maps, they're going to have, we're going to have to get somebody on the ground to come out here and look at the possibilities of which cameras we can put up and which ones work best because of, such as Howard Ward Park, I know council originally talked about David Braun Park, but I'm asking for proposals for all four of the parks, so we can look at those, if we're going to look at one park, we might as well look at all four of them. But such as David, Howard Ward Park, just looking at Google Maps, there's an issue, they'd like to use some of the, not the street lamps, not the, not the decorative ones in the parks, but the street lights that are on the, on the roadways, if we can get a contract with CenterPoint that they can use those. Part of the problem is, these cameras have to be a certain height, and some of the tree canopies are lower than the, so, so there's issues that have to be looked at.
Correct.
In person. I've also reached out to White House Surveillance, Video Surveillance, which is the company that we use for our, our vigilante cameras that we have here in all of our buildings, our security, and I was talking to their vice president last week, I think it was, or week before, he was looking at some things, and I got an email from him, middle of the day today, that he's, he's not going to be able to give us, he couldn't give us better than a 75% accuracy on any kind of bidding, just, there's some issues that they, they would have for connectivity, radio connectivity and not having line of sight back, things like that, so, he's referred us over to another company, and I've reached out to them this afternoon, obviously, I haven't heard back from them yet, it's digital barriers, but he's, he's recommended that we talk to them, he said they, they have some capabilities similar to Flock, so we're continuing to work on this and move forward, and with, just trying to get additional, more than just one company to look at and see what's available out there.
And just to remind everybody, you know, we've seen an uptick of vandalism in our parks, that included Swan Lagoon, if you remember the, the painting and the, the really nasty language that was put there, there was the rubber car or vehicle tire mark at the pavilion, there was twice where the duck feeders were, were destroyed, and then there was a vandalism to the moon tree, was the most recent one, so it's, this is in response to looking at what areas we want to protect and how we can better enhance, you know, the oversight of that, and I appreciate what you're doing, chief.
And one thing I forgot to mention, when we were talking with Lighthouse, their cameras, they were looking at, he was recommending, Robert was recommending against PTZs, because those are pan tilt zoom, somebody who's actually moving that, and we're probably not going to have somebody monitoring those cameras that often, he was talking about four individual cameras on one pole getting 360-degree view, that'd be about a $4,500 per set cost in that, but those cameras would be ours, but so then, the maintenance would be ours after that point, moving forward, but then we still have to talk about storage for the data, the data storage, if we were to own our own cameras, where Flock is part of, we already have the cloud storage in that program, that's what we have right now with LPRs, I don't know about Digital Batteriers, because I haven't had any response back from them, just sent them an email today, this afternoon, so we'll get some of that information, and we'll look, we'll have all the, hopefully, some more information about storage and all that information and costs.
And at some point, you're going to start driving down to where you're going to look at, really, what are the priorities for physical oversight?
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to get with, we're going to get with whichever company, and, you know, what range do these cameras have, I know there's, there's some areas in David Braun Park that we're highly interested in, the front entrance there, you know, by the moon tree area, down by the pavilion, and things like that, so what can we get coverage for, you know, the best, the best camera coverage, you know, without having to have 18 cameras to cover, you know, one area, so we're going to work with them.
So, I'll just jump in here to, to add support, is, she's probably going to need to have priorities from people on council, so, you know, start thinking about those areas that are needing the most amount of protection, and I've even talked to the chief with, you know, it could even be something that, with some of the noise and some of the stuff, where we have people out in the, in the marine areas, that we'd be able to potentially even have aides to be able to track down those people too, so, again, it's going to come down to expense, and it's going to come down to scope and priorities.
Yep.
So.
Thank you.
Yep, any, wait, any questions, any comments?
Mayor, I just want to know that I heard this correctly, so essentially, we, we're looking at all parks, right, because we've had problems in multiple locations, council, along with the chief and you, would decide what's priority and how we approach this, like strategically, maybe not all at once, but, you know, the high-hit areas, am I hearing that correctly?
Yes, I think the original request from council was to look at the cameras in David Braun Park, but once we started looking at it, I, I thought it was best to expand to all four of the parks, David Braun Park, Howard Ward Park, Swan Lagoon, and Founders Park. I think it's pretty safe to say Founders Park, we could probably cover with one camera, and the tree canopy has been cleared out, you know, so that's probably not an issue, but we, but I, but I thought it was best to get ideas of cost for all four of the parks, if, you know, when we come back, if council decides to do one this year, one next year, or just one, and not move forward, that's, that's an option, but at least we'll have all the numbers.
That's a good question, have we benchmarked?
I'm still evaluating how we store, like, motion detection or what that's going to look like, knowing that we don't have people behind a camera observing, understandably, not CCTV or, you know, that type of thing, but understanding that, you know, motion from docks or whatever, that we would record what's important and not, I guess, fill the storage with motion that's not meaningful.
Yes, and that's, that's some of the things, depending on which company, Flock has some automated options for that, to take the, to take the personal manual issue out of the, if we went with PTZs, again, the digital barriers I don't know about, so we'll find out from them, but, but we are looking at those options.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I have a quick question, have we benchmarked with other cities, do they have, you know, security cameras in their parks and what they're using, or?
I believe Webster does, but I'm not sure about any other bar, parks, so, we'll, we'll reach out to them and see.
Any other questions? And I'll move forward into new business. This is agenda number 10-1, consideration and possible action, this is the first and only reading of an ordinance 2025-04-14-1, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Nassau Bay, Texas, amending the fiscal year 2024 general fund, water and sewer fund, and special revenue fund budgets for revenues and expenditures.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, this budget amendment is for fiscal year 2024, the audit presentation has two components in it, it's got the consolidated level, which totals all the funds, there's no issue there, it's at the fund level presentation that there's an issue, the special revenue fund, which captures the FEMA elevation grants, has a deficit balance, so as a result, the auditors are recommending a budget amendment to temporarily transfer in funds from the general fund to the waters, and the water sewer to the special revenue, and that will be reversed as soon as we get the reimbursements from FEMA, so on the 2019 FEMA elevation grant, that's currently in the FEMA queue, historically, that's a 30-day turnaround, but they've implemented a new payment process here in this fiscal year, so it could be a little longer, so from what the Texas Water Development Board told me, they haven't reimbursed any cities since mid-January, there's like, right now, the Texas Water Development Board told me there's 8.8 million in the queue, and that includes our requests. 2018 elevation grant, that's currently being reviewed by the Texas Water Development Board, there's one item that they're currently in need, the grant administrator's working with them to resolve that, once they complete that, that will be submitted to FEMA, and again, 30 days or more, so once we receive that money, we'll do the reverse. So once we receive that money, we'll do the reverse. That's the purpose of this amendment.
Any questions? Then I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor? I'm moving too fast, guys.
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Can I have a motion? May I please have a motion?
Yeah, before you vote on it. Move to approve ordinance 2025-04-14-1 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Nassau Bay, Texas, amending the fiscal year 2024 general fund, water and sewer fund and special revenue fund budgets for revenues and expenditures as discussed.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sarah. Any further questions or comments? Now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Six, nothing.
All right, thank you.
Next one is the consideration and possible action to appoint members to the Parks and Recreation Board. This is, I think, as Michelle mentioned, it is Josh Wenke submitted his resignation. So that opens up a position and I'll open it, I'll open it to any, any comments or any, any suggestions.
I will say, Kim Clark's application was on there and it is listed, so it may have just been an error on the one that you had seen, but it is in there. That being said, I did go back and look. She's been at like all the meetings, so like she's already basically participating in. So I would, I would nominate her. I mean, she's, she's on a bunch of different, you know, the committees, working through a bunch of different projects. So I think she would be a great candidate. That's my opinion.
Was she there as a, and I just need some clarification. Is she there as the KNBB member? So she's, and that was Royce Walker's spot, is that correct? Or is Royce still on or let's have some clarification on that?
No, Royce is still on. You could have up to four people on the Keep Nassau Bay Beautiful Committee. It's nominated by the people on the committee, you know, who are there, but we already have so many people right now. It's, I'm not sure, there's a couple of people that approached me that said that they might be interested in filling in, that have actually attended, you know, events and stuff like that, so, but that's up to the committee. We have to do a vote on the committee, you know, but for right now, we got to replace this and I thought Kim would be the natural person to fill it.
And so somebody would replace her as a KNBB person?
We could, yeah. I don't know that we need it right now, but we could actually, I mean, it's going to summertime and stuff like that, but yeah, we could. There's a couple of people who've asked, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Who've attended a lot.
I also think that Kim Clark is the frontrunner. I was distracted this morning, or actually yesterday, I thought Kim was already on the parks because I've attended most of the parks' events and she's always there, active and involved. So I, that's my, I know we have a lot of good candidates, but I think she's clearly done, put in the legwork and deserves to be on the committee.
She also helps with KNBB. By the way, she helped do that garden in front of the post office. So she's involved in a lot. She was actually attending a lot of the meetings before she even got on the committee.
Any other comments?
There are a lot of really good applicants, but I honestly did think that you were already on parks too because you're at every single thing. So I was really surprised when I saw your name. So kudos to you for.
And I noticed that Jill Abel's term expired October 24th, but she hasn't reapplied.
Nope, but those aren't, those are, I don't think those are right. There's no expiration dates for the people on the Keep Nassau Bay Beautiful Committee.
Oh, Jill is on KNBB?
She's on KNBB with Royce, yeah.
Okay, she's shown as a regular committee member.
I know, that's why I saw that and that's why I tried to mention that. And Kim, so it's Kim, Royce and Jill Abel on the Keep Nassau Bay Beautiful Committee.
Okay.
I'll just say, I think I've seen you not only at Parks and Rec, I've seen you at the Garden Club, I've seen you at special events. I think you are very much trying to spend your time and it has been well served and I appreciate that and I would, I would support that. Yep. So Haley, any comments?
I really couldn't hear Phil besides you and Michelle what people were saying. I'm sorry, but I couldn't hear Sarah or anyone else that spoke. If you could summarize, that'd be good.
I think, I think people were giving kudos to the volunteer effort of Ms. Kim Clark.
Okay.
And clarifying which positions are, if there's more than one, or if it was just whether or not they were Keep Nassau Bay Beautiful.
Yeah, it's just Josh Wenke's position.
Just Josh. We're, you know, just, if you remember, we have the overall, you know, everybody agreed to stay over to July, so we're going to have a big effort come July.
Sure.
But right now, it's, we're, we're at full force. We've got, I actually think there's been more, even more volunteers operating now than, than we've, we've had in the past. So there's just, just this one and then we also have one on the NASA Area Management Board coming up here shortly too.
Understood, thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I would move to appoint Kimberly Clark to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Do I hear a second? Second by Ashley. Any further comments? Then I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor? Is that six? Yep, six oh. Then moving on, congratulations. Consideration and possible action to appoint a member to the NASA Area Management Board. I don't see Mark Denman here, but I do know that the desire is to elevate Carl Little. He is the CEO of Methodist. So from that standpoint, I believe I'd like to, I would like to recommend that we, we appoint Carl Little, but I would need a motion, but let me open it up for comments or what other people think.
Yeah, his name stood out to mine, so that would be my choice as well.
Same, same.
Okay, that being said.
Haley, I guess you're in agreement? Yes? But I mean, we're not voting. We have any comments, I should say.
I don't have any comments.
Okay, that being said, I would move to appoint Carl Little to the NASA Area Management Board.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Was that, I couldn't see, was that Sarah? Yep, second by Sarah. And any further comments? Then I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor? Six, nothing. Last one before we go in. Consideration and possible action, approval and authorization of the Joint Election Services Contract with Harris County for the May 3, 2025 general and special election. Highly recommend that we do this, but I didn't know if Paul or Maria, did you want to say anything about, about this? Just, just so, well, let me just, if you remember, Harris County last, last year decided to not do the local elections and we said we all would highly object to it while there's been a big action in regards to making sure that this is not done two years and they have, Harris County has agreed to run these and we should, my, my hope is, is that we would authorize that and, because it saves us quite a bit of money, probably about 20 grand.
Yes, it does, Mayor.
And time.
A lot of time.
Anything else to add?
Just the expenses. If anyone has any questions about those.
I have one suggestion.
What's that?
There's provisions in the contract for certain county officials to be appointed by us and we're committed to do so in the agreement. I'd like for the motion to include the actual appointment of the persons called for in the agreement, like the county clerk, to each of the husband, the Harris County clerk becomes the early voting clerk and the central count manager. And then there's some other officials in here. So that any motion to approve should also include the designations that they ask for in the contract that we're agreeing to do when we sign the contract.
So including the designation.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So we don't have to do it again.
Any other, any other questions, any other comments? Then I need a motion.
Dick, you're asking, it's already listed in there with the appointments, so we just need to, okay.
He wants to.
That being said, I would move to approve and authorize the Joint Election Services Contract with Harris County for the May 3, 2025 general and special election, along with the appointments listed in the agreement.
Good. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Was that Sarah or Ashley? So second by Sarah. Any more comment? Any more questions? I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor? Passes, six, nothing. And with that, that puts the, the current session, we're going to come to a close for, to allow us to move into executive session. So the City Council now hold a closed executive meeting pursuant to the chapter of 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in Section 551.071 of Texas Government Code, consultation with the city attorney regarding consultation with attorney on potential pending litigation regarding Tracy Sullivan or any other matter allowed under Section 551.071 regarding litigation pending or, pending or potential litigation, including litigation pending by the city with Jay May, May Jameson in Harris County, Texas, and litigation threatened by the city with Frank Zamora and wife Patricia Zamora regarding a contract pertaining to 18234 Nassau Bay Drive, as well as Section 551.087 of Texas Government Code, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations. It is 8:25, we're in executive. It is eight twenty five. We're in executive.
Thank you.
Out of executive session, it is 9:19. We are in open session. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Second by Ashley. All those in favor?
Yeah.